There we go.
Good evening and welcome to the Lewiston City Council regular meeting for Monday, May 13th, 2013. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item of business is a pledge of allegiance. Please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of business is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. You're encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others, we ask you to try to limit your remarks to three minutes. Is there any citizens' comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and public hearings. First item I have is a proclamation regarding National Public Works Week for May 20th, 2013. Proclamation reads, "Whereas, public work services provided in our community are an essential part of our citizens' everyday lives, and the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems that include stormwater quality, GIS, engineering, water and wastewater services, street preservation, traffic control, and solid waste collection. The health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the dedicated efforts and skills of public works personnel. Whereas this year's theme, Because of Public Works, is about the quality of life brought to communities around the world. Now therefore, we, the City Council of Lewiston, Idaho, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th, 2013, as National Public Works Week in the city of Lewiston. And we call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which the public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life." And we have Public Works Director Chris Davies to accept the proclamation.
Chris Davies, Public Works Director for the city of Lewiston, mayor and city councilors. Thank you very much for your support of Public Works Week and for the Public Works Department and all of our staff. Truly appreciate it. We would also like to invite you and the public to Public Works Celebration, which is May 22nd, from 10:00 to 2:00, at the Nesburris County Fairgrounds. If you can make it, we would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Moving on to the consent agenda. It's been asked that we pull item I and J from the consent agenda and move it to the active agenda. So item I, Resolution 2013-26, will become Active Agenda C. And Consent Agenda J, Resolution 2013-27, will become Active Agenda D. Other than that, is there any other consent agenda items the council wishes to pull? If not, I'll entertain a motion to read the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. To read the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Accepting the minutes of the April 4th, 2013 Historic Preservation Commission. Approving the bid award for the Snake River HMA overlay to Poe Asphalt Paving of Clarkston, Washington in the amount of $206,69.50. Approving the bid award for Seal Coat to Herco Incorporated of Lewiston, Idaho, in the amount of $103,810.45. Approving the bid award for Slurry Seal to Slurry Seal of North Salt Lake, Utah, in the amount of $115,851.68. Approving the bid award for Liquid Asphalt of Hauser, Idaho, excuse me, in the amount of $800 per ton for MC 800, $790 per ton for MC 3000, $565 per ton for CSS-1, and $475 per ton for Quick Seal 50, for a total of $140,855. Approving Resolution 2013-24 by title only. Authorizing the Lewiston Police Department to destroy certain non-functioning Taser M26s and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2013-21 by title only. A resolution authorizing the Lewiston Police Department to purge and destroy certain miscellaneous records for the calendar year 2001 and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2013-25 by title only. A resolution approving an agreement between the city of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and Horox Engineering Incorporated, a Utah corporation authorized to do business in Idaho. Authorizing and directing the city manager to execute said agreement and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2013-23 by title only. A resolution declaring certain property of the city of Lewiston surplus and donating it to the Wheatland Fire Department and Idaho Volunteer Fire Department and providing an effective date. Approving the vouchers payable dated April 12th, 2013 through April 25th, 2013, in the amount of $1,205,479. And this excludes payments to Albertson's Han Rental and Han Supply.
Okay, council. The consent agenda has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. To approve the consent agenda as read, is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to the active agenda. First item is vouchers payable to Albertson's from April 12th, 2013 through April 25th for $63.04. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Albertson's with Counselor Daniel abstaining due to conflict of interest.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. To approve vouchers payable to Albertson's for $63.04, is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0 with Counselor Daniel abstaining. Next active agenda item is vouchers payable to Han Rental, Han Supply, from April 12th, 2013 through April 25th, 2013, for $1,222.35. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Han Rental, Han Supply with Counselor Kleberg abstaining due to conflict of interest.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. To approve vouchers payable to Han Rental, Han Supply for $1,222.35. Any discussion from council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0 with Counselor Kleberg abstaining. Next active agenda item is Resolution 2013-26. I'll entertain a motion to read Resolution 2013-26.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. To read Resolution 2013-26, is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Approving Resolution 2013-26 by title only. A resolution approving a state-local agreement for the project development costs associated with conversion improvements of protective permissive left turn to flashing yellow arrows at certain intersections on Bryden Avenue and Thengray in Lewiston between the city of Lewiston and the Idaho Transportation Department. Authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively said agreement and providing an effective date.
Resolution 2013-26 has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2013-26.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2013-26.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. To approve Resolution 2013-26, is there any discussion? Counselor Kleberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have our Public Works Director. Which intersections are we talking about? Maybe you can explain the project a little bit so everybody's on board.
Chris Davies, Public Works Director for the city of Lewiston. Counselor, I can't give you the specifics, specific intersections, but it's along 21st wherever there is a permissive left, protected permissive left turn arrow will be turned to flashing yellow.
So instead of being stuck in a queue, you will now have the opportunity to make a left-hand turn if it's clear of traffic.
Correct. Yes.
That would be a good thing.
That's on 21st and on Theng, so it's clear. It's not at the intersection of 21st and Theng, but along 21st and along the corridor.
Several intersections.
Yes.
Because, you know, I can sit there on 19th Ave trying to get across to Big R or whatever, the Kmart parking lot, and you could, you could be a third car in line and you won't make it across.
Correct.
When there's nobody going, so. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council for the Public Works Director? Okay, any other further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Davies. Don't go away.
Yeah.
Next item of business is reading Resolution 2013-27. I'll entertain a motion to read Resolution 2013-27.
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. To read Resolution 2013-27, is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Approving Resolution 2013-27 by title only. A resolution approving a state-local agreement for the project development costs associated with the improvements to install thermoplastic stop bars at various intersections in Lewiston between the city of Lewiston and the Idaho Transportation Department. Authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively said agreement and providing an effective date.
Okay, council. Resolution 2013-27 has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2013-27.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. To approve Resolution 2013-27, is there any discussion by council? Counselor Kleberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a question that was asked to me the other day. What is a thermoplastic stop bar? And I didn't have the answer.
Again, Chris Davies, Public Works Director. Basically, it is a plastic-type material that's put down on the pavement and then heated so that there's a longer life to it than the regular paint that we use on our traffic markings now.
Kind of like what we did downtown?
That is correct.
On Main Street?
Yes.
Okay. Isn't there a better term for it that doesn't confuse people?
That's a technical term we have.
Okay.
Not that shorter.
Yeah.
Heated plastic markings?
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to clarify, on the Section 1 where it talks about the cost there, estimated current cost, is the $4,000 that's there the cost of this part of this project, or is it the $53,000?
I don't have it in front of me, so I probably.
Do you want to use this one, just for ease of? And actually, I meant to ask the same question on the previous one, but it would apply because it's written the same way. So however you answer this one would kind of satisfy.
I think in the bottom section under the commentary, it just says that the project development phase for this project is for $4,000.
That is correct.
Okay, so it, and it's on Section 1 general there. It's just A. Is it 4,000?
It is 4,000. Our total cost for the project, no matter what it is, I mean, again, this is the estimate, will be 7.34 percent. We're required to give them $4,000 at this point. And then, I don't have my calculator, so we would owe them, and, well, that's probably very close to the 7.34, but that's our total cost based on this estimate.
And that's just for this part of the project?
For the whole project. Not just the 4,000.
Yeah.
That's our match requirement, is what you're saying.
That, well, if, let me put it this way. The total cost of the project is 53,000.
Yeah.
We have to match 7.34 percent. And if, that's roughly, that's, 10 is 5.3, half's 25, so it's fairly close to this 7.34 percent. We are not paying more than 7.34 percent.
Which is the 4,000.
I don't have my calculator.
It's just part A on that page, yeah.
Yeah, 3937 is your 7.43 of 53.
Thanks. I just wanted to.
Okay. Any other discussions by council? Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Davies. Is there any other discussion then on this issue? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. We're now finished with the active agenda. We'll move on to unfinished and new business. City councilor comments, are there any this evening? Counselor Ortman.
Mr. Mayor, this has been another stellar week in the cultural heritage of the community. Several years ago, when we started the Sesquicentennial, one of the very first kiosks that we put up was for the Miranda House in Pioneer Park. And this last week, Counselor Cannon, along with the Knapp Brothers, the city of Lewiston, the students from LHS High School, did complete a task that Esther Barton, who was an heir of that house, a family member, really wanted to have done. She had lived in North Lewiston her entire life. She left a $10,000 legacy to the Nesburris County Historical Society to have, to use for historical purposes. But this actual, the cost for this project was actually covered by a historical preservation grant that Steve Branting received. Her goal, and the goal of a number of other people in the community, was to get the Miranda House, which is one of, if not the oldest, living dwelling that exists in the state of Idaho, moved to a place that would be drier, a place that would be a little bit better for it than being under the heavy canopy and close to the sprinklers at Pioneer Park. That was a job that was started and in three and a half days was accomplished and done with very little damage. And now there are also funds in that grant for the refurbishing of that particular facility. And I know that, I want to thank Counselor Cannon, and I know that some equipment came via Counselor Kleberg as well, and his company. I was going to say Han, and I don't know if I'm supposed to advertise or not, but I'm going to say it anyway, Han Supply, because I think it's great that they participated with that. On May 9th, we had an incredibly wonderful event in terms of the opening and dedication of the Buckeye Temple, which was a lost piece of furniture and a lost piece of heritage that was recovered and restored professionally by a company out of Chicago, but with the loving care of Gary Bush and Lyle Wurtanen. Lyle is the former director of the, he's director emeritus of the museum at Cottonwood, and now the new director of the Nesburris County Historical Society, along with LCSC and the Idaho Humanities Commission. That particular structure will be here for a long time in the LCSC Center for Arts and History, where it can be seen on Tuesdays through Thursdays every week. It's a brilliantly painted, cleaned, and historically correct addition to our community. We had it before, but it was not in good condition, and it certainly is in excellent condition. Congratulations to all those parties. That was just shortly after the 17th kiosk. When we started out, Steve Branting said we'd have one, and we kept talking about how many historical information pads we would have around the community. We've chosen to call them kiosks. There are now 17. And that one was in Prospect Park, and Counselor Stevenson and I had a chance to enjoy that ceremony as well, thanks to Steve Branting, who put that together. And it talks about the Chinese cemetery that was there, and that whole section that was probably under some of the houses that are just off of Prospect as well. That points out recognition that we should give to Steve and Branting. You may have noticed in the paper or on Facebook, been a lot of places, but Steve received the National DAR recognition for historical preservation. And that was given to him at the national meeting of the Daughters of the American Revolution. We're very grateful that he has been recognized by that. We are moving into election week. We won't be back here in this venue before the school election. I would encourage all of you to take part in that election and to remember that to vote in the election, you need to go to your regular polling spots, not to schools, as has been the case in the past. Remember to go to your regular voting spots to vote in the city election, or in the school board election, and the school levy election. The last thing I want to defer to Stephen Orr, if I may. Chief, would you come forward? I want him to tell us a little bit about what has happened with the Veterans Flagpole project that was started and actually completed in less than two months' time.
Steve Orr, Chief of Police. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Counselor Ortman, and members of the city council. The project, we have achieved our goal. We've exceeded our goal by about $800. So I'll be writing you a check for the invoice tomorrow. The funds that are above and beyond the goal will be used by the Valley Veterans Council to maintain and service the flagpole and replace flags as needed. It's just absolutely incredible, the generosity of this entire region in support of our veterans and families and people that were involved with the military. It's just been absolutely fantastic. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to express my appreciation for my partner, project coordinator Noel Abbott, who really handled soliciting donations and funds on the Clarkston side. And between he and I, and the generosity of this community and region, we've been able to fulfill that goal.
Thank you for taking the challenge that I gave you. I was sitting in the library board, listening to the people say, well, we're going to only paint two sides of the library because there's not enough money there for, to complete the painting of the rest of the library. And they were talking about the dollar figures, and they said that the original plan didn't have the flagpole in it. And I said, well, I'll take the responsibility of finding the people who can get this done so that we can get the flag funded and we can put that money that was there for that and move it over into getting the rest of the building painted. So I'm really grateful to all of you. And then, you're going to have to challenge me to be pretty good, because I heard today that my volunteer job is to work on the electronic recognition that is going to be done in the library. It will be a PowerPoint that will be going regularly for that donation and some other donations in the library in the future. And I'll be inputting all of that information. So if you want me to spell everything right, just keep me, keep me in a straight line, and I'll work on it.
I'll be happy to do that. And I've maintained excellent records for you to input into the computer.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Also, for your appreciation of challenging, I appreciate the honor, and it was an honor and a privilege for both Noel and I to work on that project. And while I have the microphone, may I make one other comment?
Sure.
Tomorrow, this is National Police Week.
Right.
Tomorrow is the Lewiston Police Department Annual Memorial Ceremony to recognize, remember, and honor the five officers who names are affixed or enshrined on our memorial. And that will be at 10 o'clock tomorrow at the LPD Memorial Plaza there next to the police department. And certainly, the community, citizens, are all invited to attend.
The fire department awards ceremony is on the 21st, right, at 6:45, but this 6:00, the social part of that, and then the awards at 6:45, correct?
Chief, I'll bring you a flag at the ceremony tomorrow, a five-by-eight-foot flag that you can, maybe that can be the first flag you can fly at the library.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other city councilor comments this evening? Counselor Kleberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was going to mention the Miranda House, because I kind of did get roped into it. Through Butch Alfred's involvement, and Butch, you know, obviously being a benevolent owner of Han Supply, told John Mock to go talk to me to make it happen. So, we were happy to help out on the project. We've helped, you know, many ways on the project. I will say that we were all covered from a liability standpoint with two large-reach forklifts, because I made Mayor Pro Tem Cannon sign the contract, even though it was at no cost.
There was a $6 bill attached to it. I don't know what that meant.
That was diesel. That was a diesel. One other comment would be, there was a kind of a final exam, if you would, for a bunch of landscape architecture students down at Lewis-Clark Recyclers. And I guess I'd heard about it, the first presentation was over Earth Day down there. Mark Armstrong, who owns the facility and has bought quite a bit of property down there, has long desired to improve the condition and the visual appeal of the building. And it's, you know, it is a pretty industrial building, but he does have other properties. And so I went down there, and it was a bunch of, it was 18 landscape architect students from the University of Idaho that had brought their final, basically their final projects with their professor down. And they had kind of an open house, and people, it was a jury-type deal. I got in there towards the tail end, but I did get to see these. And what's interesting is Mark is willing to make the investment to paint the sides of these buildings, incorporate some, whether it's vegetation as part of the side of the buildings, or just murals, things like that. Almost every one of them incorporated a small little park right behind the Heritage House, say Luna House, kind of on that back corner over there, behind the old Masters Body Works. Some real interesting designs, and it was really nice to see. And the kids, apparently the kids all just had a big old time putting this together. You know, that's what they were getting graded on. And that was a long process. So looking forward to seeing some changes down there.
And they're coming back, Counselor Kleberg, for one more showing.
One more?
Yeah. And that's, will be in the, be put in the Tribune, but we'll also try to get it out on the city website and that.
Okay, good. And then, one last thing is the annual tour of the cemetery with the Urban Forestry and Cemetery Commission will be next Tuesday also, the 21st at 5:30 at the cemetery office. And basically, take a look at the condition of the cemetery, the mausoleum. And then, it's a nice little field trip to look around if you haven't done it before. Most of the trees are marked, you know, state tree of this, you know, state or whatever. And kind of neat for people to get a real visual on the different kind of vegetation we brought in here, you know, for our urban forest and the canopy, so.
I hope Tim Barker is nicer to you than he was to me when I was on the commission. Couldn't figure out why we were starting on the west side of the cemetery. And he opened his mouth and said, "We're standing on Dr. Ortman's grave." I'll hope he'd have a little bit better tour than that.
That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, you going to talk about the MPO?
Go ahead.
The, this next week, both the, or this week, I should say, 14th and the 15th, there will be presentations on the long-term plan, transportation plan. The Times, do you have, Jim, what they are in the two cities? Noon at?
Noon in Lewiston.
In Lewiston.
At the.
Bell Building.
Bell Building. And that's on the 15th, I believe. And on the 14th, it's at 6:00 PM, I believe, at Clarkston City Hall.
Watch the Tribune. It'll also be there and things happening. But that should be of interest to all of the citizens.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's part of our ongoing transportation planning effort. And so it's important that we get public input on what is going on. And so, and this is, I think, more of a pedestrian focus. But anyway, we need that public input to go further on the process. Any other, Counselor Stevenson?
Any other, Counselor Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, we mentioned the police memorial and the firefighter awards. Also, we won't be having another meeting before Memorial Day. 2 o'clock at the Veterans Home is the annual celebration and memorial service there, which is always a nice one.
Any other council comments this evening? Mr. Bennett, any city manager comments this evening?
Just a reminder that this is our only council meeting of May. Our regularly scheduled second meeting would fall on Memorial Day, so by city code, that meeting is canceled. Then on May 29th, we will have a joint meeting with Nez Perce County to go over shared budget items and requests with the county commissioners. June 3rd, we will have a work session at City Hall with the city council, regularly scheduled meeting. And then, to top it off, before our next council meeting on June 10th, we will have the library opening, of course, on June 8th, and the pool's open on June 9th, so.
The what?
Pool, swimming pool.
Pool, city pool's open on June 9th.
Also.
Bring the duckies.
The Association of Idaho Cities, at their conference this year in Boise, they're looking for youth to come to their youth conference, and so I gave Mr. Bennett the information that asked to follow up with the high school and see if there's any interest from our youth to attend that. Any other citizens' comments, or city manager comments? Advisory Board and Commission appointments, Counselor Ortman?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to bring forward the name of Scott Funk to, for another term on the library board.
Okay. It's been recommended that Scott Funk be reappointed to the library board. Those in favor of that appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Appointment stands, seven zero vote. Any other advisory board commission appointments? Okay, work session and agenda topics, any additional from council? Hearing none, thank you all for attending, this meeting's adjourned.